Okay, it's six thirty. We're gonna call this meeting to order.
Bow our heads. Thank you, Lord, for giving us this time to come together. Allow us to use this time fruitfully as we work on the issues that face the city. May we seek your will in all that we do. May you continue to protect those who continue to protect us, all of our first responders, in Christ's name.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands to the right of the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the republic. For the God in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and in this world.
Rules of the Forum. Treat each other as if you would treat anybody else. Do we have any citizens' comments? Do we have any? We've got a consent agenda is next.
Ms. Mayor Protam, I'd like to extract item five point two from the consent agenda.
Second.
Anything else?
Okay.
Take a vote, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. Everything but that.
Okay, what I'd like to extract, please, is the, um, if you go to page twenty, page twenty-four in your packet, page eight of the minutes from the fourteen March meeting. I need to clarify something. I'm pretty sure I said it wrong, but I want to make sure. Where it says Councilmember Kipit stated there was something they talked about with RCH at the meeting, and RCH said they were going to work at putting that on their website. What I said at the meeting was that they should look into sending it out on their alert system. Not that, um, we would send it out on the alert system. So I'm pretty sure I said that wrong to everybody, but it's, RCH has the alert system, not me.
Did you get that, Shelley?
Thank you. With that correction, I'd like to approve the, uh, make a motion to approve the March fourteenth City Council meeting minutes.
Okay, give us a second.
Second.
All aye, all approved.
Aye.
All right, we move on to item six. Up for consideration and action. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, let's see, on five point one and five point three.
Ms. Mayor Protam, I'd like to make a motion to approve items five point one and five point three of the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move on to six.
Mayor members of the council, thank you. Um, as, as you have requ- requested in your overall, um, in the orientation and the development of the Community Events Committee, um, your request was, and part of that is that the Community Events Committee return after a major event and report to you. Um, we have the chairperson of the Community Events Committee, Ms. Sarah Naylor here, to report on the egg drop, which was on April first. And very fun event, and, but I'll let her get you all excited about it.
Yay! All right, so, uh, we did our second annual event April first. Um, we do have some pictures. Conrad was sweet enough to ask how many people. I don't know. I don't know. Um, I would say between six and eight hundred, something like that.
A bunch.
A bunch, uh, yes. It's, uh, it was well received. I haven't had a single negative comment at all, which is huge. Um, we had great weather, great attendance, uh, we had lots of help with cert out here for the parking. Um, all the events went over extremely well. Uh, last year we did, and it made no sense, but I can explain why, but we did marble races, um, because we had to add marbles to the eggs that dropped out of the helicopters so that they weighed enough. Um, this year, instead of marble races, we did, uh, we painted pet rocks. And it makes no sense, but it was just something that the kids absolutely loved. The lines were kind of long for the mechanical bull or, you know, the Euro jump that we had, so it gave them something else to do. Um, it was cheap, it was free. I mean, I got permanent markers and my daughter had some landscaping rocks. We threw them out there, um, not knowing, but every time we looked, that table was full of kids painting rocks. So it brought back the seventies for us. Um, we did change it up a little bit from last year in that, well, we didn't know what to expect last year, let's be perfectly frank and honest. Um, we had a lot more kids than we could have ever imagined, so we were well equipped this year. I think we had about twelve hundred eggs last year and we had about seven thousand this year. There is the Easter Bunny on the mechanical bull, by the way. Um, so we want to maybe do ten thousand eggs next year. Uh, one of the things that we did differently was our vendors that wanted to come out, they, their payment to come out was to supply two hundred stuffed eggs. So that was just a great way to get more eggs for us. And then Lake Shore Church was awesome and they gave us about two thousand eggs as well. So we had a lot of community support. Um, can't wait to do it again. We have been requested to have the Easter Bunny jump out of the helicopter next year. So we're looking into possibly doing that. Um, so, you know, this is event number, biggest event that we've had so far this year. We've got two more coming up. We look forward to doing those again. Um, we'll have Heroes Day coming up at the end of September, and then we'll have the Christmas on the Forum in December. So that's what's coming up, and, uh, anyway, any questions?
No, I got a comment, though.
Yes.
A couple of comments, actually. Thank you so much for bringing this to our city.
Oh, good.
This is so awesome. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And the other thing is, is I'm so sorry that I haven't even, or any of us, actually, haven't even asked you to help stuff eggs. I think I was talking to Warna or somebody. It was like, oh my gosh, I feel horrible. I haven't even asked Sarah. She needs help stuffing the bad gum eggs.
Last year, I would have, like, brought them to your house and said, please, help me.
Yeah.
Um, this year, we, we were able to get Heath High School Student Council. Um, they did it as volunteer hours, and so we took them all of the supplies for the ones that needed to be actually taped and, and heavy enough for the helicopter to drop, and they did every one of them for us. So we were able to supply volunteer hours, of course, to the student council as well. So we're getting a lot of support, um, in the community, which is great, and people actually are coming to ask and asking how they can help. So it's, it's been very well received.
Well, I'll try to remember next time.
Okay.
Try to ask you that. So, but thank you again so much for bringing that to the table.
It's been a blast. I'm loving doing it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so. The Oasis, are you ready for that one?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the Oasis, um, pickleball, um, we have the principle of Oasis pickleball and Oasis, um, business, more than just pickleball, but pickleball is overcoming everything, not only in McLendon-Chisholm and at the Oasis, um, location, but all of the Dallas-Fore Worth area and all of Texas and, and probably the, all of, and I don't want to take away some of his presentation, but all over the whole United States, it's already been submitted to be an Olympic sport. Um, and people are playing, and, and the key to pickleball, if you've never played it, is, is that you could have the best athlete in the whole world, and you could have, like, a sixty-five-year-old grandma or something, and she could hang with the...
You better watch it.
Oh. Okay, I'm just saying the differences, and, I mean...
That's hitting a little close to home there, Conrad.
And at the same time, whoops. And at the same time, you could have a sixteen-year-old girl, um, and she could go whoop up on some thirty-five-year-old guy that thinks he's all that, and that, so now I had to add them in into that, so.
Nice try.
Get in trouble everywhere.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Darren Rack is owner and CEO of the Oasis Pickleball Club. And he's actually here to give you, um, a presentation of, of what's happening over there, what's causing, um, all the uproar and all the excitement over there. Um, he's had some, some, um, big names over there in the pickleball world, as well as other worlds, um, participating and observing what's going on. He's seeking to continually improve the facilities over there. And, um, and the overall atmosphere of the club, and, and right now, one of the major things that he's looking for is, is, um, an addition and a new parking lot. It's, if you've been over there during some of these big tournaments, and especially if there's some type of inclement weather, it's, it's kind of a real uh-oh, especially with the type of clay soil that we have. And he's requesting the city participate in the Chapter Three Eighty agreement. Um, and his request is for twenty-six thousand dollars, and that will be reimbursed over time. I mean, you guys can negotiate those, those terms. I put some suggestions, um, in your packet, but you can negotiate those terms. Um, the request is, is eleven percent of the overall project cost, so it's, it's a very minimal amount compared to the overall project cost. Um, and, and it all comes, as we know, as a reimbursement through sales tax revenue. So it's not an upfront cost to the city, it's something based on his productivity, which you'll hear him in a second. He's, he's pretty robust on, on where this is going and all the benefits that are happening. Um, but would love to help our city, um, continue to be part of that excitement and growth instead of, um, having all the leakage to all of our neighboring communities because we don't have services to, to offer them. So, anyway, um, Mr. Rack is here, and...
Is your mic on?
Turn your mic on.
Wait till the red button turns on. Is it red?
Push that. That's better. Um, so I, I own two businesses over, over, uh, in McLendon-Chisholm, one of which is Urban Air, which was one of the first businesses that we, uh, started. And we were actually, there's two hundred and eighty-seven Urbanairs down in the United States. We were number three. So just to tell you, we were, you know, McLendon-Chisholm was one of the very first, and, uh, and then I also own Oasis Beach Tennis Club. We, we call it now, it used to be tennis, but now it's pickleball, and we basically converted everything. I'll tell you a little bit about pickleball, but I think the message that I think is really important to discern here is that businesses can be very, very, very successful in McLendon-Chisholm. And I think some people will say, you know, boy, you're, you're kind of off the beaten path a little bit. You know, that's not the case anymore, okay? That was the case years ago, okay? It was the case when I started back in two thousand thirteen, probably. And if I had, if I had, if the business was mature like Urban Air, they probably wouldn't have allowed me to build my building there because it would have been too far off by thirty, right? But to give you an idea, if anyone thinks about putting a business in here, Walk On's Restaurant, for instance, approached me about three weeks ago and wanted to put a walk-on dr- a walk-on restaurant at my facility. We can all imagine what that would do for, for our city. We know we're not ready for that yet. I have to tell them. We're getting there, we're getting there, we're just not quite ready for that, um, with the water situation, sewage, and all that good stuff. But, but I guess the takeaway, I would say, is that McLendon-Chisholm has a lot going for it, and we are going to go places. It's just going to take a little time and be patient, and some of us, I hope people understand how fortunate we are sometimes to have the ability to build facilities like this in an area that's not. Part of why we are so successful at, I'll talk a little bit about pickleball, is simply because I have twenty-five acres. Where could I have gotten twenty-five acres? Probably could never have happened, and I couldn't have afforded it either. But we have twenty-five acres, and we are the number-one pickleball facility. We are the number-two in the United States, number-one in the south, in south, in tech, in south, um, United States. And the main reason is, is parking. You can't, you can't do a, you can't even do, this was three years ago, this picture. Now we've got ESPN and Fox News and Swatch Sports coming to our facility to cover a lot of our events. We're doing over twenty tournaments that will bring in over five thousand people in, on a Thursday through Friday, or Thursday through Sunday. So you can imagine what it does for rockwork, okay? We're not the beneficiaries of that. We basically just rent our courts out. Somebody comes in. But we dig, we, we've pinned it down to about twenty-eight percent of the people that come to this city to come to this facility need an overnight stay. Really important, because you can find a lot of data right now that you can read on the internet about the impact of what this sport does for municipalities, okay? It brings in an incredible amount of tax revenue. And I thought to myself, you know, there was a time when we met and we talked about putting a hotel. We weren't ready for it at the time, but at some point, we want to put a hotel in. We need several hotels. We would, we would absolutely fill them up every single weekend. If I had VRBOs, I would fill up every single room, every single facility. But we're getting a lot of people that are moving in from all over the United States. And believe it or not, this pickleball craze, it's not, it's not a fad. It's not going to go away. It's going to be here simply because it's fun, it's enjoyable for all ages, it's a very, uh, it's an easy sport to access, it's very sociable. Um, you don't have to be a great athlete to play it. You can always find somebody at your level to play with. And we happen to be lucky enough to have built forty-two courts, which is way more than anybody else in the United States. There's only a couple of facilities in the United States that even have anywhere close to over twenty. So for that reason, we have a great airport, right? We have a great airport in DFW. We will hold the nationals, first senior nationals this year at McLendon-Chisholm. Thousands of seniors from all over the world will come here to play in the finals, which is a big deal for, for our community, I think. Um, we also, uh, the rating system is called Duper. Duper is the number-one rating system. That's how you become a four-oh or a three-oh, like, tennis, if you ever play tennis. They will do their finals. They do tournaments all over the country, and then they have their final. Their finals are going to be right here, which we are so excited to have. And there'll be five thousand people there. There'll be fifteen hundred players. And the number of people that come with them will be incredibly large. So I guess what I would say is we have a big opportunity down the road. And I don't see things changing in the sense that we are a tournament facility, which brings in a lot of people from around the country and around the world. This lady here, this, this picture, she was the number-one player when she came. And she came from France for this tournament. So it's not, this, this is, this pickleball is international. It's not national, it's international. So the number-one female in the world now, she's now sixteen, she's turned sixteen years of age, and she generates about five million dollars a year for herself, so there's some real money in it. And there are some huge backers now because it's gone because of television revenue. And I know you've seen it on the news where celebrities are getting involved. Most of those celebrities really going around. They are just kind of used as, Mark Cuban's out there, he actually, I mean, he was out here today at our facility. And he, he would like to, I think he's, he has family out here, so I think Mark would like to see us. We've got a lot of fish for dogs in our town, essentially, of keeping the facilities, keeping the tournaments that we have here. That's a real thing, hard thing to do. The tough thing is he could put itself in opposition. Challenging thing for me is, for instance, Farmer's Branch decided to, it was between us and Brooke Haven. We have ten times the number of courts Brooke Haven has. They had all tennis courts. But the municipality came in, and we're not ready for this, but I want to tell you, kind of so you understand how it works. They came in and said, don't worry, Brooke Haven, we're going to take care of all the expenses. We're going to paint all of the courts. Pickleball it afterwards, we're going to paint them back. We're going to bring in all the food trucks, we're going to bring all the, the food, we're going to get... So it, it makes it easy for them to get a tournament because they don't, that Brooke Haven is going to be part of that. So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So think about that in the future, because our day's coming. It's going to take a while, but we're going to get there. And, uh, if you can, can I switch the, the slides I just hit them, or did someone else hit it? So just to, I'll be quick here, but pandemic, believe it or not, was one of the few, was one of the few, um, reasons for this, in this body. Simply because people were so anxious to get out, and this is such a social sport. You can see the average age now, believe it or not, it's thirty-seven now, the average age. So it's not, now, we have a lot of folks my age, I'm fifty-seven, so we have a lot of fifty-seven, sixty-five, you know, thank you. A lot of, uh, people in our...
That's what, what, there, the time is close. There's not a way to, to let it go, let it go, let it go. It's a problem that people get so frustrated.
Anybody that gets into it pretty well loves it because they can play it. And they can play with somebody at the same level, to be honest with you. Don't play tennis, you can get exposed to it.
And if you can, that's the type of one, that's the type of two. So it looks like the one.
Um, so you can kind of see, there's a lot of arguments, but most of the time, the city will probably, like, my business turn is a softball side. They know what we have, and you know what the state is, what they decide. It wasn't too simple, not to be true. And then it's really hard to, to be, to be, I have to guard, maybe, but I'm still in there. So it's everything, like, I see. I'm happy to do that, if it's united to go and play with each other. Um, you could ask, you could, you could, you could, you could. It's really valuable in that, and simply because, uh, a lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, it's been, uh, uh, it's really, uh, uh, economic, you say about it.
Okay, so item six point three is my request for the agenda. Since I've been on council, I have been running and organizing the Memorial Day and the Veterans Day ceremonies. And I've been the person that has been organizing the Veteran Brick Campaign. And since I'll be leaving in a few weeks, I was wondering if there was anyone on council that was wanting to take over those projects. Okay, the Memorial Day Ceremony and the Veterans Day Ceremony, it involves starting, you know, organizing the program, getting speakers together, writing the script. That's, you know, just the daily, that's fairly straightforward. The Veteran Brick Campaign is an ongoing campaign and we usually, we have on our website, we have, people can fill out an application to get a brick. So Judy, at the front desk, receives that information. And then I, as the council member, would gather up all that information. I would then work with the brick company, go get the bricks engraved. We have the bricks onsite here, get the bricks engraved, and then work with a contractor to inlay the bricks. So that is more of a time-consuming project than the ceremonies are. And when it started in twenty, it started in 2019, I was the first person that did that. We had suggested that a veteran do that. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a veteran, but we do have three veterans on council, I would think that that would be a good thing to do for a veteran. All right, and then I'll just sit down with you all and tell you how to do it. I have three bricks, I only have three bricks outstanding to put in. I was gonna go ahead and do that before my term of office was over, so that you would have a clean slate and you may not have to do anything until November. But the Memorial Day and Veterans Day, Memorial Day for sure, because I want to hear that to do that. That's pretty straightforward.
Do you both want to go ahead and table this until next council meeting? That way they can decide between since Brian will be here and Mayor will be here, and then they can decide then.
What do you want to, you want to just?
Well, I'm gonna be a part of it.
I think we can discuss from Brian, from Brian to help you out. Okay, all right, so I think we're good. So I'd like to make a motion. Do we need to make a motion? I don't think so, it's not an actionable motion. But it does have to be a councilperson that handles the brick campaign versus me just continuing it, because I do handle mine for the city. Okay, so just make a note that it will be Floyd and with the assistance of Floyd and Brian working that project. You're not here. No, Floyd don't work, it's Floyd.
Okay, so six point four, the citywide solid waste and recycling. We wanted to go ahead and pull that. That is, I think that's what Mayor wanted to weigh on.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if you want to table that to a defined meeting or a future meeting. I think the next meeting is kind of very still. So if you wanted to, or you could just table it right now with an undefined meeting.
I agree with you.
So let's just pull this one and put it on a future, a future one. So six point four.
Phase six point five is discuss potential transfer of RCH water assets to the city, including, but not limited to, confidentiality agreement for inspection of RCH facilities, maintenance of said facilities, and monetary obligations in connection with said facilities and operation of same. Can I get Adrian to help with that one, please? I apologize, I was late due to Dallas traffic. So on April fifth, we had the monthly meeting for RCH Board. And I, obviously I attend those and also record them. And I get to the pleasure of writing notes and all that and try to keep people informed about what's going on. Again, I want to just acknowledge the council, but thank you for making time to come out. It's very important in understanding what's going on with our water and all that. So the first thing first, I just want to acknowledge that there has been changes in some leadership. We had a positive election that led to Mr. David Naylor being on the board. His first meeting was on April fifth, and I have to say, I'm, you know, that meeting was probably the most refreshing meeting I have ever attended. And I just want to applaud him for, oh, there you are, who didn't? He did such a great job, and I just want to thank him for, number one, for stepping up and volunteering for this particular role. And I just so much appreciate him. So he, Mr. Pullen ended up nominating him to be the president. And Mr. Warren Harges is still the vice president, and Mr. Pullen is now the secretary treasurer. I don't know if you remember Eddie Daniel, he was the former engineer. And now he has requested from RCH to, he submitted a proposal for the tech stock project, for the relocation of water lines in November 2022. And so he has officially withdrawn that proposal for engineering services for consideration. And on February 22nd, we had Valvin Weeks come here, just to kind of give you a visual who this individual is next. So they agreed, there's a new agreement, it was a master agreement and task order agreement that was presented. And they went ahead and went and approved for Valvin Weeks' proposal. So both engineers did confirm that, you know, that this is way past due. This is, needs to be done. So I believe that they are working together and any type of issues regarding to that agreement, they're gonna be working that out. And it looks like they're gonna have very good communication. There was also a discussion regarding the RCH Board approved for the ballots to be drawn up for the transfer to members now. I'm sure that by the next meeting, we'll know a little bit more about what the plans for election and when that date will be called and all that. So we don't know any information from that yet, other than that they did approve for the ballots to be drawn up for the transfer to members. The one thing that I want to, I know that you have an executive session item, and I want to kind of briefly talk about that. Because I did intentionally bring a printed transfer of assets and customers. It was a resolution that was passed in September of last year from the city council. And I did bring it intentionally, a printed copy. And I don't know if it was an accident of choice of words, but Mr. Pullen ended up referring to a resolution that was passed recently from the city council in regarding to confidentiality and things of that nature in regard to inspection. And that's incorrect, it was labeled differently. So I just want to make sure that that's understood, that I literally handed a printed copy from the resolution that was passed in September, and so those are two different documents. And so whenever you do have that discussion, I hope that in that itemized agreement, that you will be doing due diligence of asking the questions of like, who's gonna go in? Who's gonna be doing any type of forms of inspection and address that? Because I think that that would be important for our city as well as for RCH as well, because I think that they want to be informed as well. So I think that the communication's gonna be improving from where it was before. I'm excited and also I'm looking forward to a better relationship, and I hope you all are also too. So if there's any other questions or concerns, well, thank you so much.
Thank you for the update. I think we're gonna go into seven, which is executive session, seven point one.
No, Mayor and Council, I believe legally you're eligible to go into executive session if you want to discuss and receive legal advice concerning the RCH matter. It's listed in the agenda. If that's something you want to do, or if you want to wait for a full council, it's up to you.
Is there anything beyond the update?
Since it's you and Mayor, it's really the two of you to present us. I'm just gonna encourage you, just because of the time that we're in, I would encourage you to definitely go into executive session and review that item.
Oh, that one item? Do we know who has that item?
Yes, sir.
Do we have it?
Yeah, it was drawn up by our city attorney, so he's well versed in that.
Can you guys have it? Okay, all right, then we'll go ahead. Do I need to read that then? Okay, so seven point one. I adjourn into executive session, closed meeting pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0712. An executive session will be conducted to discuss and receive legal advice concerning a matter in which the debt duty and attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter related to the following. Discuss potential transfer of RCH water assets to the city, including, but not limited to, confidentiality agreement for inspection of RCH facilities, maintenance of said facilities, and monetary obligations in connection with said facilities and operation of same. Seven twenty-two. 722.
I wondered where you were. No, it was on a Wednesday. Yes, ma'am.
7:44 and we reconvene the regular meeting. No action has been taken in executive session. So is there any updates, discussion, direction to staff? Has anybody got any reports or announcements?
Lorna and I will be attending a, it's an opening of the I-30 lanes in Rockwall. They've extended from, I think the, from, what's the turn? Dahlrock, thanks. Dahlrock to the 205. So I guess they've opened some lanes there and they're going to have a dedication on Thursday for that. TechStop is open to invitation to those people who are connected to the consortium.
Oh, no, that's my, I'm, I'm doing it. Okay, I guess that's it. 7:46 and I call this meeting closed. Okay. I know. I know, right? I know. I know.